Good evening. I'm bringing the City of Hayden regular city council meeting to order. It is Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, approximately 5:01 PM. May we get a roll call of council members, please?
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember DePree.
Yep.
And Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Would everyone join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the two republics stand one nation under God, indivisible, with the peace and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? Okay, we'll move right on to the consent calendar. All items of the consent calendar are action items. They consist of approval of January 10th, 2025, joint city council and Hayden area regional sewer board entity meeting minutes, approval of January 14th, 2025, city council meeting minutes, approval of February 11th, 2025, special city council meeting minutes, approval of February 11th, 2025, city council meeting minutes, approval of agreement with Connolly Enterprises for DJ Services, acceptance of right-of-way dedication and grants of easement and acceptance of public infrastructure associated with Doris Development Site Plan, approval of contract with E-Plan Soft to provide electronic plan review, software as a service, software for the City of Hayden, and bills for payment. Is there a motion or any discussion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the consent calendar items 1A through 1H.
Second, we have a motion in a second. Are there any questions? We got a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember DePree.
Yep.
And Council President Roder.
Yes. Here we go, we move on to the visitor public comment. Opening up my script because we have a new person tonight. So as it relates to public comments, for the audience, this is a city council meeting transparently documenting city business. Although not a meeting with the public, citizens may address the dais if they fill out a card located on the table at the back of the room. Public comments are welcome, but they cannot address those issues that our city council will reasonably hold a hearing, including issues related to anticipated land use decisions. As we are here to positively build our city, please refrain from using the podium for spectacle. I will limit individual comments to three minutes. Speakers will state their name and primary residential city prior to addressing council. I encourage everyone to meet more meaningfully, engage the city through a personal appointment with myself or the staff if there's a problem to solve. It will visibly indicate when a speaker needs to conclude their comments. Bill, you want to go first? Thanks.
Thank you. My name is Bill Breezy. I have a-
Live in Hayden?
Hayden post office box. I just live just outside of Hayden, Denny. But I am here tonight. I am a member of the Hayden Historic Preservation Commission, and I read all of that book that was handed out to me, the first meeting, and I'd like to read some of the things that I picked up out of this book. First off is the mission statement for the Historic Preservation Commission. It says, "The mission of the Hayden Historic Preservation Commission is to gather, preserve, and advance the story of Hayden." I heard that. I read that, and I, wow. Wow, that's, this is one of the best mission statements I have ever seen, you know. The purpose. The purpose comes from the ordinance that created the commission, and this is 2.3.1. "The purpose of this chapter is to promote the educational, cultural, economic, and general welfare of the public of the City of Hayden through identification, evaluation, designation, and protection of these buildings, sites, districts, area structures, and objects that reflect significant elements of the city's, state's, and the nation's historic, architectural, archaeological, and cultural heritage." That's quite, you know, quite good as well. And then 3.2.3.3.5, "Powers, Duties, and Responsibilities." F, paragraph F. "Make recommendations to the planning processes undertaken by the county, the city, the state, or federal governments and the agencies of these entities." And I'm kind of a newbie on the commission, and I just don't see this happening. You know, there's no way to coordinate a lot of the stuff that's going on, you know, like the Arts Commission is putting benches around, and the Historic Preservation Commission this year is going to spend some time working with a historic walking trail, where we'll have some markers and other things. Would have been much better for us to coordinate with them so we put together a cohesive plan of what's happening, you know, and so I, you know, my observation is that each entity is working in its own little silo, and there's really been no cross-communication, and I would certainly want to encourage that. The statements that I read are totally visionary, and I agree with 100%, and we just need some help in order to really bring this to fruition. So, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. I'm gonna do my best Robert on the last name. Is it?
My name is Robert Kleynions.
Kleynions, thank you.
Yep. I'm a citizen of the City of Hayden Lake. Real quick tonight, I'm not sure if the Hayden Council is aware, but the City of Hayden Lake is considering to convert a portion of Lakeview Avenue between Bozanta near the country club, north to Miles Avenue to a one-way northbound only. Not really sure the reasons for that, but I at least wanted to make the council aware. I assume that would push some traffic down Miles Avenue, further down Hayden Avenue, and into the City of Hayden. So, I do have preliminary plans here if you'd like to copy, and that's all.
All right, well, thank you.
Like to see.
Okay, well, Abby's passing those out. Any other person in the audience wish to offer public comment tonight? Do we have a representative from Hurrah here tonight?
The Hurrah report was included in the packet.
Okay, so there's no verbal report?
Correct.
All right. So for item 3A, there is a report, as Abby indicated, in the packet tonight. I guess I'll ask the question, does council have any comments or questions or anything that needs to be discussed relative to item 3?
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I'd just like to comment that it would be nice if they recorded their special meetings as well as their regular meetings. They're doing a really good job on recording their regular meetings, but their special meetings, if we could ask them to consider recording their special meetings as well, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Very well. All right, we're gonna move on to our first item, 4A. And it's our only unfinished business item tonight, and it's the contract to engage SCJ to prepare and present the changes required to update our comprehensive plan. Does council wish to offer any comment prior to a motion? Anybody want to make a motion then? Thank you.
I will move that we approve SCJ Alliance Comprehensive Plan Amendment Professional Services Agreement. A motion in a second?
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
No.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
And Councilmember DePree.
Yep.
All right, we'll move on to item 5A. Our first new business asks council to consider endorsing the city's offer letter to Cooten County to purchase approximately 3.2 acres, commonly known as Lake's Highway District Facility. Discussion, or we?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, which item are we on?
I'm sorry, the agenda changed a little bit.
It's 5A, isn't it?
5A.
Right.
Okay.
I wonder if it said 3.2 earlier?
Yep.
I apologize. Yep, all right, A and C were flipped, sorry. I made my notes off of a draft, so it looks like it changed a little bit, or I got dyslexic.
So we're discussing the-
Yeah, let me reintroduce, thank you. Sorry. All right, so the four points.
Your agenda is incorrect.
This agenda is?
Yes.
This is the one I just got off the back?
I know. It was printed and copied from the, incorrect. Not the final agenda.
I have a bad piece of paper in my-
So, A and C are flipped.
A and C are flipped.
Or A and C is moved up before A.
Could you read off the title, just so I make sure I pick up the right document?
Board book is correct.
All right, what I get for going old school and getting a paper in my hand? Do we have a correct one?
That's not correct. This was moved up to here.
Okay.
It's all right, I'll just pull up board book. We'll just drive from the computer.
I have much choice these days.
Try to keep the paper company in business.
You have me on pins and needles here, so.
Okay, do some breathing exercise.
We lost the internet.
I think our community could go through some breathing exercises. Oh, blue screen of death, really? Told you, we just lost internet. Seriously? All right, I give up. So what item is supposed to be?
This one, 5B, and it's right here in the book.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, Steve. That one is incorrect.
That one's not correct.
Unfortunately, the copies were made off of an earlier version, so we're considering land offer, which is 3C.
All right, so our first item of new business tonight is to ask council to consider a land offer letter. This is a letter that we're writing to Cooten County to potentially purchase 3.2 acres of land adjacent to the airport. This is the land that we've owned the two buildings on, and so it would be item 5C if you're going by the paper copy.
Well, item 5, item 5A from the board book, yeah.
You can object if you want for summary of this letter and offer for consideration, or council has any questions?
I have questions, but it's more just to sort of paint the big picture for the people watching here.
I could do that if you want to fill in.
Knock yourself out. I just, I do have a question.
So for the city, basically, we have a piece of property that we've owned for quite a while.
No.
Hold on.
He's telling the story.
I'm going somewhere. We were planning on moving part of our staff out there. Secondly, we, there's a piece of property where we own the two buildings on.
But we do not own the dirt.
And we don't own the dirt. So what we're suggesting is that we buy the dirt, but we use the money that we're going to sell the piece of land we had at first to pay for it. There's the background. Make sense?
Yep.
All right, that's the background. Let me see if I'll crank you here, I'll boot up again.
So may I, at this point?
Fire away.
Okay, so to tag team on the mayor, the way this works out is we sell the land the city currently owns for more money than we actually end up spending to buy the dirt under the two existing buildings, which are right by the airport. And my question was, and I looked at the offer price per square foot of land, and I wanted to know, first of all, this hasn't been accepted, this is what we're going to tender as an offer, since it definitely works to the advantage of the city, what is, what are the odds that this is going to continue to work out for the city, and how did we justify the quite large difference in per square footage price between what we're going to sell and what we intend to buy?
Well, we haven't set a price for what we're going to sell for.
We got an appraisal, though.
We do not have an appraisal.
That's on the agenda. We're asking council to approve?
Yeah, I know, and we'll hear that after this, right?
I mean, we'll get the-
Okay, so I'm sorry for getting ahead, but I want to be able to square these two things so that we are as successful as possible.
We break apart the two actions and talk specifically about the proposed offer. I think I get yelled at first. The proposed offer that is written in the letter that I prepared for your consideration tonight to purchase the 3.2 acres that our facilities, Public Works facility is currently on. This is a piece of property that has been currently used in this way since Lake's Highway District moved out there and built them probably 50 years ago. We entered into a sublease with Lake's Highway District with the county's permission in order for Lakes to move out to the new facility, so we've taken over that. We purchased the buildings from Lakes, and now the county has come and tendered a proposal for a per square, a fair market value per square foot, and a letter indicating their interest in negotiating a sale of that to us. So, what I have done, working through what the county has recently done and looked at, what they currently or most recently purchased from, I believe it was a fire district, some property at 90% fair market value. So you'll see that the proposal in alignment with what the county has recently accepted should prove some consistency amongst their decision-making if they accept their value at 90% of the fair market value. And then I have a deduction in the square footage area where I feel like they've over-calculated. So when you look at that deduction minus the difference in the fair market value to 90% of that, you get the offer at 882,576. So, that is one decision point council needs to make, is whether or not we want to move forward with the sale of that. The other decision point that we'll talk about later and at that point in the agenda is about the current piece of property that the city purchased about 10 years ago in order to facilitate a move onto this five-acre piece that's located just to the south and build new buildings. That decision was made, previous administration, to me being here, and the presumption was is that we would be doing the same thing, building buildings and moving out there. We were able to move out now to some existing facilities, so we don't have that cost. So the question then becomes whether or not council wants to surplus that five acres, and there's a specific process that you have to go through if you're selling it, I guess, to the free market versus to another taxing entity, and that process will cover at the next decision point what that looks like. So if council feels like the 882,576 is an offer, they want to be contingent upon the sale of that five acres, we certainly can go through that process of selling the piece to buy this one. But at this point, the way I wrote this up is that we would purchase the property, and then we could at some point, whether it be today, tomorrow, sometime in the future, decide if we want to sell that five acres.
So what are the odds of them accepting this?
I am pretty optimistic, and I'm excited to give it to them. I think they'll accept it.
Because if they don't, then we have to restart the clock, right?
I think that the next response would be for them to counter.
Okay.
Did they approach us?
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, yes and no. I mean, it's been a dialogue.
They approached us to gauge our interest in this deal we're talking about now.
The public record that was provided to council on our website shows the interest letter that they provided to us along with the fair market value evaluation. So, admittedly, I had been in talks with the airport director shortly after I accepted employment here about the possibility of us engaging in a offer to purchase. So it's been something that's been talked about for the last year, and I'm happy to see that the county took the initiative to provide us that opportunity.
Okay, any other questions?
Just to comment, I think this is really smart to do business like this, because, you know, again, we have a low levy rate, we don't have a lot of extra money, but we own a piece of property we bought 10 years ago for the idea of putting our public works out there, and of course, that property is appreciated in value. I don't know what we paid for it, but we get current market value, I think we'll do well with what we get. And then to convert that into buying the property rather than leasing from the county, a lease can always change. In fact, what I heard is that if we go to current lease rates out at the airport, it could be, it could quadruple what we are currently paying through a lease agreement that Lake's Highway District has with the county, and somehow we're able to pay that. So I don't want to risk having to quadruple our payment. Plus, when you lease something, the money's gone. We buy the property, we own it, and this is just a really efficient way of doing, a smart way of doing business, and I, and I'm glad that we have this opportunity.
Sounds like we should make a motion then.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second what Matt just said. I agree, and I'll make the motion that we, we're on C.
Yeah, consider land.
Consider land offer, letter to Cooten County for purchase of 3.2 acres of land adjacent to the airport.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, could I just clarify that the motion to send the offer to the county is based on the per-square footage amount that was provided in the record?
So I need to add that to the motion?
Just maybe looking at you to see if that needs to be a part of it, or?
You can just say, yeah, the per-square footage amount that's been identified in the memorandum presented.
Yeah, so I'll add that to my motion to identify the per-square footage amount in the letter to be offered to the county.
Okay, are there any comments on the motion being made?
Yeah.
Maybe we get a roll call vote, please.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember DePree?
Yes.
Okay, what's 5B for rules? All right. This one? All right. All right, so now our second item, which is, for those in the audience, it's listed as 5A, but it's 5B. "Council will consider declaring the approximately five acres of city property to be put up for sale. As we talked about, this property was purchased with the intention of moving staff, but these plans have been superseded by our potential purchase of the Lake's Highway District Facility land."
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject, then some more information around this. It's under Idaho Code Title 15, Chapter 14. It's very specific about the method in which you would surplus property that you no longer intend for public purpose. And I want to start by saying that I think it's important to consider whether or not the city wants to sell this piece today versus maybe holding on to it and selling it at some point in the future. But regardless, unless any legislative laws come into effect between now and when you do decide to do that, the process should relatively remain the same. And that process would be to declare the property as surplus or not for public purpose and intend to sell it pursuant to Idaho Code. And you'll see under the memo that I provided to you, I cited those code sections, which we would then have to do subsequent of the intent to sell, so declaring it, and then, of course, you will then, as mentioned in the memo, have to declare a minimum value, and then hold a auction to sell the price, sell the property at highest bid, and you'll see the requirements for publication in accordance with Idaho Code. So tonight, the opportunity is to discuss whether or not you want to or intend to sell it, basically determine it as not for public use, and/or you can do that some later date, but regardless, you'll have to do that if you intend to sell it. And then secondly, would be at the advisement of our civil attorney is to seek a, what do we call it, a fair market value assessment of that so that we can, appraisal, so that we can set the minimum bid at some point in the future. So I broke this into two actions. One is the decision whether or not you want to sell it, and then the second action would be whether or not you want to retain a appraisal company locally here to do that work, to provide us a value. That I stand for. Any questions?
Okay, any questions about intention to sell?
So we would state our intention or authorize the city to move forward on an intention to sell, but we don't really sell it until this council then makes a second decision, correct?
Yeah, there's, it's like a three-part process here. You can combine a couple of them into one step, but I've broken them out to give you a chance to discuss whether or not you want to sell it. So first, you have to declare it as essentially surplus, or under Idaho Code, it's called a declaration of utilization or not for public purpose. You have to make that claim. And then the next step would be to declare a minimum value. A lot of times, those co-hand in hand, but we're going to break that apart because we want the clarity from council as to whether you want to take this intentional position, so that we, then we can invest the time and resources into bringing forward the fair market value or minimum value that you want to set it at, and then hold the, essentially publicize the sale of that through auction, which would be the third step. I will tell you that, let me just follow up with saying really quick to finish up the process. After you, excuse me, you have to hold a public hearing and have a public auction, you can not sell the property if you set a minimum bid for anything under that minimum bid. The, but you, if you receive no bids, or you receive no bids in excess of the minimum bid, then you can sell it for whatever price you want based on that essential contingency. However, if you set the minimum bid, let's say we set the minimum bid at 100,000, and it came in, the bid came in at 150,000, then we could sell it for 150, but we couldn't sell it for 90. And then alternatively, if there are no bids received, the city can have the option to sell it by any means necessary, so.
But tonight, we're just simply asking council to declare or not declare the underutilization and intent to sell property.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
My motion is to approve the declaration of underutilization and/or not used for public purpose and intent to sell city property known as 4.5 acres plus or minus of land off Dakota Street.
Second?
Mr. Mayor, if I could clarify, it's 4.85 acres of land.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion being made? And we got a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember DePree?
Yep.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
All right, now we're going to move on. For those in the paper audience with me, it's 5B. This is the, we're gonna... We're asking council to consider a third-party valuation and allow a mayor to sign an engagement letter with Valbridge Property Advisors to establish a property minimum selling price. Any discussion, or would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I move to enter into the engagement letter from Valbridge, I guess, offer the engagement letter from Valbridge Property Advisors to set fair market value of plus or minus 4.85 acres of city-owned property known as H40501515788.
There's a motion.
Second.
And there's a second. Any discussion on the motion? Maybe we get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
And Councilmember DePree.
All right. On to 4D we go. This is, "Our next item seeks council's permission to authorize the use of City Hall as a 2025 elections polling place." Is there any need for discuss, or would someone like to make a motion on this one?
I move that we use, accept the use of City Hall as a polling place for the 2025 elections.
Second. There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? And we got a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember DePree?
Yep.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
And Councilmember White?
Yes.
All right, we're out of the woods. Moving on to 5B is our last new business item, and it presents council, council had asked staff to give them information and a recommendation whether to expand our recording that we do currently for city meetings, and to ask council to provide direction to the staff. So that is the last bit of new business we have tonight. Anybody like to make a comment after reviewing the package that was provided?
Can I start?
Absolutely, Tom, go ahead.
So I just want to comment on the table showing the average total views and average view duration for, this is, if anybody had looked at the document that was provided on board book, this is for Planning and Zoning, City Council and Joint City Council Planning and Zoning Means Meetings. It doesn't look like a lot, but I have to tell you that I find these records-
provided on Board Book, uh, this is for, uh, planning and zoning, city council and joint city council planning and zoning means, meetings. It doesn't look like a lot, but I have to tell you that I find these recordings to be some of the most valuable thing the city does. Because like with planning and zoning meetings, if I don't come to watch them myself, I can watch the whole thing. And it's, you know, especially when it comes to land use actions, it's like getting, uh, a cheat sheet on what we're going to, uh, be presented in our own council meetings. So I find video and audio recording to be very valuable and, uh, I just want to leave that out there as a comment.
Yep. And just for clarity and for the, uh, sake of the internet and the audience, uh, council has provided a table of recommendations of what to record with video, what to record with audio, and what not to record. And as Tom has indicated, he finds planning and zoning helpful. Planning and zoning was recommended to stay as it is right now, um, with a video.
So we're talking about keeping city council, P&amp;Z, joint city P&amp;Z, but not to include historical arts, uh, veterans.
I think some of those are audio.
Yeah, most of them are possibly audio, but we're looking at, are we talking about video recording in particular, or any, what type of recording are we talking about?
There's a, there's a, there's a table in your memo.
Right.
With three options, to either not record, to audio record, or to video record. Again, that's with our recommendations. So what we're looking for tonight is for council as a body to provide direction to the staff to say, we accept these recommendations or we'd like to modify these recommendations.
Okay, I, I get it now.
So the only one really that, that is undetermined here unless, I think the recommendation is the same as it's been so far, right?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, so the only...
We currently have staff built to do.
Right. So the only question mark is the all other commissions and committee meetings. Is that correct?
No, it's also special council meetings, uh, joint meetings involving city council, city budget workshops, and other city workshops. Currently audio.
Okay. I guess, well, people seem to be mulling it over.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, several questions, comments, whatever here, because I kind of went through this. Um, do we have a cost, what it is to video the, um, various commission meetings that are not on this list, that are the other commission meetings? What does it cost per?
Three hundred dollars per meeting?
That's what we're paying right now for outside help to come in and do it.
Three hundred dollars roughly, okay.
So we obviously have to look at that, the aggregate of what that would look like if we wanted to create either a new position here to do that or potentially contract out the remaining of those.
Roughly three hundred dollars depending on how...
Well, that's what we pay now, yes.
Right.
That's for audio and video.
That's for a vendor to come in and do that. So I'm not saying that that vendor would do all of them for that amount. This is what I'm getting at.
Right. Um, can I ask, I know the clerk and possibly city administrator, how many calls do you get or requests from constituents, uh, to video, especially these other, uh, commission meetings, say in the past year?
I've not received any.
I've, I've, I've never received a call, uh, for it. Um, what I have seen, um, when we talk about the snippets, and I, I too found it interesting, the amount of time when you have your average meeting of, let's say for the council, an hour and thirty-five minutes, and the average viewing duration is seventeen, with a hundred and six total views over periods of time. Well, I've been following this and tracking it. And what I see a lot of, they turn into YouTube, uh, snippets, if I'm not mistaken. And what happens is, um, certain people who run websites take the YouTube videos that we record, edit them out, and then distribute them amongst all kinds of social media sites with their own, uh, interpretation, shall we say. And each time on those various social media sites that somebody clicks on it, it shows as a view. So some, the actual people who may be watching us now or maybe, you know, uh, in the future is, uh, really, um, nowhere near, I believe, as it is those who click on the snippets that are distributed out through various, uh, social media websites and the like. Uh, we have eighteen thousand roughly residents, eleven thousand roughly registered voters. And I think as staff just said, and I've never had anybody, I think, no, I've had one person, uh, at one point in time who appeared to be basically reading a prompt script, script, uh, talked to me about this, uh, on an email, I believe it is. And, um, I, I don't see the value when it's costing three hundred dollars per pop, uh, to videotape the other commission meetings. We're audiotaping, we're audio recording, uh, several of them by this, by this sheet here. But I think at three hundred dollars per pop, and we're talking about trying to save money here and be very, very tight with basically nobody requesting it, uh, I don't find the value in doing it.
Okay. Anybody else want to add to that?
I'd like to add to that. Yes, uh, I, I find our, our, um, video recordings to be very, very helpful, very important. Uh, I believe that it provides transparency to the public. It documents our decisions so people can be involved in what we're deciding. It's convenient for citizens to watch later that haven't been able to come to our meetings. It's great for clarification. If you're just audiotaping, you don't know who said what unless they're introducing themselves before each statement. And I think our, our chamber here is set up really well for video recording. We've got how many cameras around. And I think it's very, um, I think it's, it's a good service to our people to be able to record and to be able to present this stuff to everyone for convenience. Uh, I wanted to ask Lisa, uh, which commissions are not audio recorded?
I don't know.
Abby, do you? Um, it is up to the clerk because they are typically recorded so that the clerk can then, uh, use the audio recording to do the minutes, which is the official record of the meeting.
Okay, so, so we don't have a policy on which commissions are audio recorded right now? Okay. Well, I would like to propose that we audio record every commission as a permanent record and that we also put somewhere on our website, a place where people can easily access these things. Because right now, if someone wants to access a meeting, get an audio recording, they have to file a records request with the clerk. Is that correct, Abby?
Correct.
Okay. And not everyone knows how to do that, so they don't all have access to it. Um, and I, I believe that, you know, personally, I'd like to record everything. I'd like to video record everything, but I know that that's not possible. And, um, and so I would ask at the bare minimum that we videotape the same things we are videotaping now, the regular city council meetings and the P&amp;Z commission meetings. I would also like to videotape anything that a council member is in for the sake of posterity, for the sake of record. And I would also ask, out of all the commissions, that we do video record the Public Safety Commission, which is only four times a year, because those meetings are very important and have to do with our law enforcement. And we just, and since they're only four times a year, it's important to be able to refresh our minds on what's been said and what's been shared. So that's what I propose right now.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
I have a question, Sandy.
Yes.
You said any meeting that there's a council member at. Do you mean where a council member is officially part of it?
Yes.
For example, a joint meeting? Or do you mean that you just showed up in the audience?
No, not audience. I would say our, um, our city council meetings, special city council meetings, joint meetings, and workshops.
Thank you.
Where we have long-range planning.
Matt or Tom?
Thank you.
Uh, oh, well, I think Ed wanted to ask a question first.
Is that a quickie? It's not a question, basically, for the audience who may not have access to what we have. Our chart here, existing currently and also record...
Can we throw it up?
Yeah. I can probably go through it faster and throw it up, but by all means. We currently, regular city council video, P&amp;Z video, special city council audio, joint meetings involving city council audio, city council workshops, video, city council budget workshops, audio, other city council workshops, audio. Recommended, uh, regular meetings as is video, PZ as is video, special city as is audio, joint meetings as is audio, city council workshops as is video, uh, council budget workshops as is audio, other council workshops, audio. So I don't think that, you know, everything that we're currently doing is available as is already. So I think we're really just talking about the, like I said, the arts, the historic, those, those commissions, uh, type of things.
Okay. Tom or Matt?
The three hundred dollar number, Lisa, is that total cost or is that the difference between video and audio versus audio?
No, that's the cost of audio or video recording, excuse me.
Sorry?
That's the cost of video recording through our vendor that we currently use for planning and zoning.
Okay, so, so is there a cost associated with just audio?
Uh, no.
We could have our clerk provide, do the audio.
Okay. So if I look at these tables, are you still trying to bring it up?
It might take me a while.
But we don't, oops, I'm sorry.
Well, what I'm trying to get at is, it, it doesn't look like there's any suggested subtractions, uh, from what we're currently doing.
Correct.
Uh, and then Councilman White has, has made the ask for adding video to certain meetings. So, uh, it would be good to have a rough order estimate of what we're talking about in terms of savings or, or expense.
Yeah.
Because I, you know, quite honestly, uh, i- if we're really addressing this as a dollar issue, I'd like to know, like, what it is that we're proposing to save is the amount of money.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to ask Lisa, uh, right now, the regular city council meetings are re- are recorded by staff, so that's not a three hundred dollar cost. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the question was, what does it cost us? And I get, the answer I gave you was what we currently have for a vendor that does our outside record, our recording for the additional meetings that we have. I've never, um, gotten to what it actually costs us using Michael and his time, but it's, you know, when you have somebody in-house, you're going to pay less than you're going to pay a vendor. But right now, we don't have any additional time that we can put forth with his schedule to accommodate additional recordings. So then we lean on, well, what do the private sector provide? Well, we have one area of knowledge or data point, which is the three hundred dollars per meeting for this one vendor. Does that mean that's what we're going to get for all of them? I don't know. I have not done that, uh, research where I've gone out and asked for vendors seeing this, uh, you know, proposal for what it would cost to do that. Uh, you know, those are things that, uh, you know, depending on the nature in which council goes in this direction will be a matter of what other data points you want to bring back, so.
Matt?
Thank you, Mayor.
Can you guys see that? I don't know if that's, I can try to download it and...
If you push the X, it should go full.
This? Okay.
Yeah, and then hit the plus sign over on the upper left.
And then the plus sign to page.
And hit the square root at the bottom. Cosine. So, um, I haven't had anybody say that they don't have access or they're not getting information from the city. And, and I got to give kudos to, to our clerk because Abby is the front person on that. And she does an excellent job in getting back to people, uh, the information that they need. I know that we have minutes that people can request. It's a little more of a process to get a public records request, but frankly, it may take you five minutes, that, to fill out one sheet of form. And, and then you can email that in or attach it to an email. Um, and then, I mean, if a council, council member White has a whole bunch of requests, I say, bring them forth, let's put a number to it. Because I, I'm not, I, I, you know, I'm like Tom. I don't want to make a decision because if it adds up that we need three thousand dollars worth of recordings a month more, I don't know what the number is, I'd rather put that money to our streets, you know, places that we really need it. Um, but that's, that's where I'm at, is, uh, have Councilmember White give a complete list of what she wants, and let's put a number to it and then kind of talk about it some more.
Can I clarify that minutes are available on the city's website of all the meetings once they are approved?
Okay.
So you don't have to do a records request for that.
It's just the audio that you have.
Just the audio.
Is that form online, request form for that?
Yes.
It's on the website as well.
Yeah, I, I have to say that if, if our goal here is to save money, I'm not hearing what I would consider enough data to make a decision. Apart from that, I will say that personally, I like the idea of video because as a, as a consumer of the video from other city meetings, I've found it very valuable for my, what I've done as member of this council. So I'm kind of in agreement with, uh, that maybe we ought to tell you this until we get a better ROM on the number.
I would like to get you guys to give me an idea of what you want the run to be. So frame it up for me so I understand what it is that we're doing. Because right now, we're giving you our recommendations. So if you want to send it back to staff with some caveats on what you want us to, you know, bird dog down, that would be helpful. But to just leave it open...
Lisa, what I think I heard is there, the change, the delta between what's recommended and what council is talking about is to video the Public Safety Commission and to audio all other commissions. Is that correct?
But I heard the additional video of anything that a council member has involved in, which would be any workshop that involves council.
Yep.
And where you currently have audio. I think your baseline data point, it might be important to say, Lisa, this is what we cover with just staff. This is what we're currently paying under this regimen for extra video time. And this is what it will additionally cost to add all the video that you've asked, that you've suggested.
Sorry, Lisa.
I guess I just don't know to the extent, am I looking at a vendor or am I looking at bringing on additional staff? Because we don't have the staff right now to do that. So that's a framework where I'm like, I could go seek private sector to look at what that cost could be and give you that framework.
Would council like Lisa to ask the current vendor that we use what he would charge to?
If he could do it.
If he could do it, assuming he could do it to, uh, increase his presence?
I'm against adding staff to do this, absolutely.
As am I.
It's too costly, so.
Okay.
Again, um, so that, because I think, uh, this is being championed by Councilmember, um, White, that, you know, I want to make sure she's getting her list and we can put a number to it. Um, frankly, right now, I'm, I'm okay where, where we're at, but I, for just courtesy, I think, let's look at what she wants, put a number to it, and then discuss it.
Did we capture all of your additional video requests when we just rattled off that list, Councilmember White?
I could email my list in.
That would be great.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Yeah, we go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah. So, uh, we have the existing. So what we're really apparently talking about is either audio of all of the other commission meetings, which if I'm not mistaken, occurs anyway, that they transcribe their minutes from. Abby, is that correct?
Yes, most of the commissions, um, currently audio record. I will...
Do they archive that audio? And if so, for how long?
Currently, the city's retention schedule says two years.
So all that really needs to be done or addressed possibly is the fact that people who want to access that archive have to fill out a, a request, okay? But it is there and available for people who do want, uh, at least the audio portion. So I guess the determination is, those commissions, do we want to? And I don't want to add staff either. So it sounds like we're looking at, uh, outside vendor, uh, to, uh, see what it would cost to have them video those other commission meetings, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, before we put this to bed, uh, I know this is a council decision, and I'm going to say something similar to what Ed said. I guess my only concern, uh, although not asked, is that we're using taxpayer dollars to fund what could be, uh, a perverse use of the audio, of the video recordings. Tom has indicated that he finds them useful, but if we again look at the average view duration, I don't see where anybody's literally watching our meetings. I think they're looking for pieces and parts to use for whatever they're using them for. Um, I also think the number's probably reflected by the fact Um, so I guess what I'm getting at is I'd hate to use taxpayer dollars to fund, for example, an Henry political agenda or something. So just that's my two cents.
Sorry, I'm going to motion the table, heading further information. Is this an action item?
Well...
No, it wasn't.
Yeah, it wasn't. Yeah, so, so from this, just for clarity, staff will get back to council with a, uh, rough order magnitude, not a contract, but just an estimate from a vendor of what it would take to add meetings, and then council can deliberate whether it's worth spending money on. All right, and with that, we'll move on to 6A, City Administrator Report and Calendar Review.
So, it's end of, end of February here, we're moving into March, we're just having early discussions of budget for 2016 happening, so look forward to future meetings where you'll get an agenda posted for how, or, excuse me, not agenda posted, but an agenda for consideration on how the budget process will work for this next year, and, uh, certainly feel free to provide your thoughts about that. Um, I also wanted to make a comment that we are, right now, um, having four new employees start within the next two weeks. Two of them start this week and two of them start, um, March 10th timeframe, so...
What capacity?
Could you please repeat that? I couldn't.
Yeah, four, four new employees, starting with the city this week, two of them this week and two in a couple of weeks. Uh, and so, uh, at some point, we'll, we'll take a chance and do some to them, but we're pretty excited to see those positions all filled.
Which positions, which capacity?
So, uh, this week, we have our deputy public works director starting, so this is the new position, if council recalls, that we established when we had attrition of one of our longstanding employees when they retired. We reorganized and offered, rather than, um, sort of a hands-on frontline staff, we moved up and tried to support administration, so that position was filled, and we're looking forward to seeing, um, our new employee start on Thursday. And then, uh, we also hired a third person in our building inspections to help with our backlog of buildings, um, building inspections that need to get done, that were, I don't think there was really much of a break over winter.
No.
So, you know, the, that, if council recalls, when we talked about year-end, fiscal year-end last year, and some of our workload, that was what we call unearned income that we received, that's sort of income that's been shelved pending, uh, when our staff is able to go out and do those inspections. Well, we have so much of that for backlog, so we brought in a third, um, inspector. We also, um, are excited to see them start, I think he started today. And then, um, March 10th, we have our finance director starting and our deputy finance director starting. So, yeah, we don't have, at this point, any open positions, so we're pretty excited to see. I think I used the term, we're, we're, we got all cylinders going now, four-wheel drive, so, excited.
Anything else, Lisa?
That's it. Unless there's questions.
Lisa, could you mention about the Thursday event that the mayor's pointing at?
Sure. So we have our State of the City address with the Hayden Chamber, happening on Thursday, where the mayor will be speaking, and, um, I think an invitation's been sent to council members and some staff that will come and join and listen, so excited to see that.
Just there for the free lunch.
No such thing as a free lunch.
You won't be, you won't be impressed. Bless their hearts.
Maybe I'm just eating, but it's usually okay.
Lieutenant, good evening, thanks for coming.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, as promised, you have December and January stats, uh, that I wasn't able to provide last time, so you'll look and see, um, something of note there, uh, the assaults in, I have the wrong one here, I apologize. The assaults are gonna look like they're up just because of our federal mandatory reporting, those are domestic disputes that kind of fall underneath that assault when we report those numbers, so that's why that spike is there. And then, um, Honeysuckle Beach shows to be a, um, a lot of calls for service, that's just deputies, uh, initiating, uh, security checks, so don't be alarmed when you see the amount of time we've responded there, it's not necessarily call-driven, just more proactive work.
Is that usually when they go down there and find somebody or something going on?
No, if they go down there and check it out.
Driven through, is that when they just drive through, is that considered a, a call as a...
They do, they build a generated call for that, like, security check.
Even if there's nobody there?
Even if there's nobody there.
Okay.
Yep. And then if they're on that and a crime is committed or they find a crime, that new crime is, is generated.
Right.
So that's just, and that would all go to the total, so one contact could certainly turn into two or three calls for service, so that's why the number looks so high.
Yeah.
So nothing to be alarmed about.
I have a question on that.
Yes, sir.
So our goal when we designed this report was to identify where crime was most prevalent. If we use the statistics of a, I'm just gonna take a drive down and see what's going on, that really doesn't tell the reason why this is on the report, so, uh, I don't know if it's, if there's a way to break the total calls up by reactive versus proactive, or to not use the sum of, I'm just gonna take a drive down and see what's going on as a hotspot, uh, statistic, because again, the goal of the hotspots is for us to know where crime's going on, and so we're not telling the right story anymore.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what I wanted to, to, uh, let you know, is that's self-generated, I looked up some of those, I wasn't able to hit all, um, it's been a busy day, we weren't able to hit all 46 of them, I'm sorry, 31 of them in that month, um, and so most of those were just self-generated, nothing call-driven, so that's certainly something we will look at to...
Yeah, if you guys could fix that, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any questions for LT?
No, no, go ahead, I've already asked, go ahead, I'll wait.
I'm very curious on any follow-up information on our two armed assault, or armed robberies in Jan...
I'm sorry, sir.
Sorry. I'm very interested to hear any follow-up information on the two armed robberies that occurred last month.
Okay.
Do you have anything to tell us, like, who they were, where they came from, and...
Oh, I don't have their names, I'm sorry, I was...
Well, I'm not...
They were, I can tell you, uh, it was great work, they were both quickly identified, um, I think the...
The gas station.
The HEICO incident, um, the detectives had a identification on that man at the late that night or early morning hours of the following day, and then he was apprehended. Um, and then the one at, the one at, um, the hay, uh, the Prairie Chopping Center there, that was a, it's still under, it's still to be determined whether or not that was a robbery, um, if you will, a...
A transient?
A transient man approached a gal, asking for some money, um, and, and she kinda got away there, and just, what was articulated may not quite be a, uh, an armed robbery, it was cer-certainly a crime that was committed, but it wasn't necessarily a robbery, uh, but he was detained within a matter of minutes as well and apprehended, so both of them are, uh, he was not a resident of yours, he's just a transient and a, um, he was not a compliant, he's a non-compliant sex offender, um, so there was additional charges, so, oof.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Um, the thefts, uh, and I, again, I look down, besides Honeysuckle Beach, we have the usual Super One and Walmart, are those thefts related to Super One and Walmart primarily, or where are those thefts coming from, and what are the, what are the primary, you know, uh, uh, Super One 29 calls, Walmart 23?
Those are primarily, those are primarily calls for service, so that would be the theft and shoplifting or willful concealment, um, and, and items like that.
Right. The usual. Thank you.
Any other questions for us?
We're trying to get you December, so, I sent it to printer, but apparently it didn't go.
One more, I'm seeing traffic accidents, 24, uh, and was that just in the month of, looks like January's we're looking, so there were 24 accidents in the month of January?
Yes.
So I'm reading that correctly. Do you have any data or any person, I mean, experience on any particular locations that are heavy accident, or?
I, I know, our traffic team actually takes, um, a lot of those stats, and so I can get, I can provide that to the mayor for you, um, this week, um, that's tracked heavily within the traffic unit, so I don't have a good intersection for you, or, or the cause, but we have it broke down by time of day and day of week and streets and whatnot, so we're certainly giving you that information.
Because I'm hearing a lot of the, the usual suspect intersections that still seem to be increasingly dangerous, in my opinion, so...
Yeah.
It's probably that, yeah. Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks, LT.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Okay, uh, any council member have a report from a board or commission that they're on, that they would like to report?
Yeah, um, okay, so, Mr. Mayor, Lisa, you've already, actually, I've heard some of this, uh, last Thursday, I attended the aquifer protection board, and at the direction of the mayor, I made an ask that they, along with Panhandle Health, do a presentation for city council, the subject being the aquifer, and, uh, basically, what existing remediation or efforts are undergoing right now for protection and preservation of the aquifer, and then also, like, you know, one of the things that, it, it was quickly obvious to me after talking to a few people, is there's a disparity between what, if, if there is a problem and what is the problem, and then how to quantify it and measure it, but obviously, this topic will affect the city as well as all the other municipalities around here, as we go through and update our comprehensive plan and our codes, so, um, I wanted them to come, or the mayor wanted them to come here to present before the body, here, the council and staff, and, uh, just so that it's in our minds and we're all kind of talking the same lingo and stats, so that's ongoing, and, um, unless there's any objection, I'm glad to take the lead on this and, and just keep pushing the rope until we get them here.
Pushing or pulling?
Sorry?
Pushing or pulling?
Push.
Push the rope? Then it kind of ballered, heard the cats.
Tom, I wanna, uh, say publicly, thank you for, uh, taking the lead on this, this is the kind of work that, uh, city council should be doing, you're looking for solutions and getting the people that we need in front of us, uh, and focusing on the things that potentially could improve the lives of our citizens, so thank you for that.
Thank you, welcome, glad to do it.
Anybody else got anything?
I'd like to build back up to what Thomas has brought up, um, I did, I met with the Panhandle Health District, they have a aquifer protection person, uh, that oversees, um, water, they look at water quality is what their focus is on, and they have test wells throughout the county that they monitor for certain contaminants, um, and they expressed, as Tom said, an interest to come and talk to us, and our planning and zoning, because I think it's critical that not only the council knows what is happening, uh, with our, their, the quality of our water, but it's, but that, the planning and zoning needs to know, uh, because there really is, there's, there's kind of a couple of important questions that I've asked Panhandle Health, and, and also, Tom was there and I was also at the, Cooney County has a aquifer protection board, and it's, it's, that's their purpose, we, they collect a fee from everybody in Hayden, it's like $5 a year, and I think they started in 2008, so we've been paying, um, this board to protect our aquifer, I mean, it's an aquifer protection board, and so, the question I've been asking is, does it develop, any development over the aquifer, does that enhance the quality of the aquifer, or any development over the aquifer, does that degrade it? And I'm waiting to get answers on that. I think I know what I think, but I want the, the experts and the entities that are in charge of this to, to answer that kind of question. Uh, so, yeah, I think that, I'd like to see this included in our, in our comp, uh, plan amendments, and any other codes that I think we have a, a duty to protect that water source, because it's a sole source water source for 500,000 people, and, uh, one, one other item, and, uh, this is a, an interesting article that I pulled out of the Corning Press by Kay Thornburg, I hope I got her right, her name right, and it was a discussion about City Link and funding it.
Yeah.
And, um, this, this is a quote by Leslie Duncan, and I really like Leslie, by the way, she's the chairman of our, uh, the Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board, which we are one of the owners of, and I was the vice chair of it last year, and now I'm just one of the voting members, but anyway, um, Leslie, I'm just gonna read two sentences here, it said, "If the county concerns, our primary financial, Financial Duncan said, she favors bringing together stakeholders to create a methodology that spreads the financial responsibility equitably, equitably, blah, based on where service occurs." And this was referring to the City Link, but then this next paragraph I found really interesting, she said, "Because cities make up 55% of property valuation in Cooney County, Duncan said, tax-paying city residents effectively," this is the key part of it, "subsidize county operations like community development and law enforcement." And that's been my statement for a long time, is we are subsidizing our sheriff's department, and the sheriff disagrees with us, but here, Leslie used to be the, uh, the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, and that's our comment, saying, "We subsidize them." So with that thought, I went and did a little digging, and found out that, um, Cooney County has their, it's called their Justice Fund, that's where the marine division, the jail, the deputies, the, um, um, uh, the detectives, all the cost for police service, if you will, that's $36,447,565. Um, then, the court is a separate fund than that, the court fund, that's $7 million. Hay, Hay, Hayden has approximately $3.2 billion in valuation, and our 2024 Justice Fund levy rate, in other words, how much money do the people of Hayden pay directly to the Justice Fund to support the Justice Fund? And I won't read that number, but it's a long mill rate, I can read it if you want, but basically, the county, the, the residents pay $2,558,060 directly to the, uh, Justice Fund. In addition, we as a city collect from our residents, and we're gonna pay the sheriff's office $9 million, or, excuse me, $953,880 for a total of $3.5 million roughly. That represents about 10% of the, that Justice Fund budget. So about two years ago, I asked the question, the money that the citizens of Hayden pay to the Justice Fund, how many deputies do we get? Good question. We don't know, we can't tell you. So I looked at our current contract with our county...
Matt?
Bear with me, I'm almost done. One more second.
We're way off topic.
I know, but I wanna make a point, and this is for roundtable discussion, I assume, and, and our contract says that, "The county shall provide law enforcement services to protect area 24 hours each day, the services provided shall include routine motor, motor patrols assigned to Hayden." Uh, we'll have 10 deputies and one resource officer for, in the contract. And then I found, this was my last statement, and I'll be done, Mayor, just bear with me, and then the very last exhibit on the contract, it says, "In addition to tracking shift coverages, which they're supposed to do, the county will also provide an hourly dedicated service report showing the hours of deputy detective time for the year." We got like two years of that, and then we were told, "We're not gonna do it anymore because it's wrong." So they're not fulfilling this contract by giving us the hours. And I've been hyping, I've been harping on accountability, but in our contract, we're supposed to have time reports, and it's, it's in our contract. That's all I'm gonna say, thank you, Mayor.
No, it's only 6:10, come on.
That's not the point, so, so the idea behind the mayor, or the reports of mayor and council are for things that...
Are we at roundtable yet, or so?
That's my point, I kinda got rid of the roundtable for that very reason that Matt just made, bless your heart, thank you, but...
Well, I, I think, I think it's important, especially what Matt has brought up with City Link, and I'm gonna tag on it, we need to have either some type of discussion or some, you know, whatever about it, because anybody's paying attention and has watched, uh, the direction that the county is going, um, we, it initiated a few years ago with, when they made it very clear that they're gonna start ratcheting up that the city pays for the sheriff, and now they're talking, they're taking the boat ramp and doing it, you know, making somebody else pay for it, and now they're suggesting that cities and whatever pay more for City Link. I'm seeing them trying to shift off of their books onto everybody else's books, and saying, "Well, we, we cut taxes, so we have to raise taxes to provide our city people with the same, uh, services, so we need to have a discussion," I think, either council staff, mayor, we need to find out and start looking at City Link, and what do we want to do? How much do our citizens actually use it, and the like? Because, uh, Commissioner Duncan also said something, when I watched this meeting, and they were, and the, and the commission was having their debate about it, and if we wanna play this game, shift the tax and play the, you know, the, the, what's it called, where you put the thing under the cups and then go like... what's it called, where you put the thing under the cups and then go like the shell game? Commissioner Duncan said it. The city taxpayers pay to the county for services, we don't get any. We don't get the value of the county planning commission and their building departments, and she rattled off several of them that we pay taxes for but don't get any use of, as the other commissioners trying to say, "Well, they're paying for City Link that people don't use." So if we want to... we need to be ready to play the game, okay? And one last thing, Matt, with regard to Harves, okay? Can you comment on this recent legal issue with the... what was it, PFOS and all that other stuff and the fish testing and where that stands? I know that there was supposed to be a meeting Monday, a special meeting, but...
Yeah, we had executive session.
That's what I'm saying.
And we did a... we did, and I think I can speak to this because we did approve a potential settlement in this. And the EPA, which has its...
Yeah.
How to put it? Control over the IDO DEQ who enforces EPA Clean Water Act laws. We are being asked to test the flesh of fish in Lake Coeur d'Alene for concentration of mercury, which is going to be expensive. That's one of the issues within... this is part of getting a new permit to allow us to do what we do. We have to meet certain requirements. One of them was that. And the other one was, I believe it was, and forgive me, I may be wrong, the PFOS, which are these forever chemicals... yeah, it is, where we have to test for PFOS. And there was one other item, and I'm spacing it, but basically, this was a negotiation going back and forth, because it was in a... it was an accord of law that we would settle it based on this agreement that we brought forth. We did approve that agreement to go forth. So now it's up to DEQ to decide.
Okay, do we have any requests for future agenda items tonight?
I don't know what that thing with City Link is, but somehow I believe we need to initiate at least investigation into where we stand and on it, how much we spend, how much we use it, and start looking at that, because they're going to throw it at us.
Okay. Okay. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn? Adjourn.